Okay. I have a motion.
I'll tell you what.
Okay, I have a motion.
There too, where he would have to be tied in.
All right, motion's come out of executive session.
If daddy.
All right, I make motion come out of executive session.
Motion's come out of executive session by Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Cross. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let the record show no, uh... No action was taken. No business, yeah. All right.
Da, da, da. There she is.
They don't need, no need to sit down.
Oh, no, man, you front, center.
You're front, center, no need to sit down. This is your day.
Congratulations, by the way.
For what?
I understand you're the commissioner, or the...
Don't make me bang my head on the podium already. Yep, it's me again. You're welcome.
Yeah.
Such a glow, such a glow about you. How great.
Yes, why not?
She may be a little excited about some equipment.
That's what I'm saying.
It's Christmas today for us, yeah.
Oh, is it here?
Mm-hmm, it pulled in as I was coming up here, so Leslie's probably stabbing me in the back right about now.
Oh, okay.
Or y'all.
Real quick, guys, just a quick update on why this, why we're having this discussion. We've got two different things that are out there on the time horizon that y'all need to be thinking about. Uh, I sort of introduced this to y'all with, uh, with a quick email a couple of days ago. Alright, so you got upcoming school bond election, we had our meeting with the superintendent, and with Representative Huroff, this also with the board attorney, Brett Harrow. Uh, we talked at length about some of the issues that were involved with the school bond election. Uh, at the end of the meeting, what we were advised is that they, that the school district, while they have the ability under the school bond election statute to designate polling places, we left the meeting with the understanding that they do not intend to introduce any change to our current election system, which is that whatever polling places apply to the Rankin County School District, they will be open and voting will be taking place. There won't be any special selected locations or changes. So the districts, I'm sorry, the polling places will be the polling places. The other issue and one thing that I wanted to make sure you guys get to address is that the AG's opinions are very clear that the cost of the school bond election is to be borne, at discretion of this board, by the school district. And we need to talk about that, and we need to make a decision so that we can report that back to the school district, so that they can prepare themselves. If this board is, is wanting them to pay for it, we need to be able to report that. If this board does not want them to pay for it, we need to report that.
To me, if we were having something else on there, I think we should work something out. And it costs share, or they could wait until May when we'll have about half of our precincts working for mayor, I mean, under mayor's races. But because they want this specific day when there's nothing else, I think they should pay for it.
I, I agree with you. With one little caveat, though. Um, I think that they might, would not have all of our voting precincts in use. And since we're needing to test out our new equipment, maybe we, they just cover half the bill. Well, let me ask you this. In the past, when they did the last one, did we pay it, they paid it?
No, sir, no, sir, we paid.
We paid.
They did not pay.
Oh, really?
Correct.
I was not on the board at that time.
Oh.
We covered the whole thing. I know that Mr. Morris is not here. His, uh, in, in a discussion that we had, it was obviously unofficial. He, he indicated to me that he would prefer not to charge the school district. I don't know if that makes any difference to you guys. He's not here, obviously, but, uh...
No, we don't need to be putting a bill for it all.
If it wasn't so emphatic that there'd be nothing else on the ballot, and when we discussed, or had, uh, we thought we might, was gonna put, uh, our, uh, bond, brown...
But we couldn't do that.
Well, I know, but when we thought about it, they had a, no, no, we, that was gonna be a big problem. They want this for themselves, and I don't see, I don't see where it being there.
Really, Bob's against it? Cause the night we sat there and talked about it, he kinda told her that...
I, I don't wanna put words in his mouth. I, I'm just, I'm sharing with you that the substance of my conversation with him was that we probably just need to cover it.
Well...
I'll let him speak himself on that, but he's not here, but...
Well, since we're using it to test out our new equipment, I, I would like to cover half the cost, at least.
I mean, we could do, we could do that. I mean, we could do that mainly as a, uh, showing goodwill. But I, I'm, we got stuck with the other one.
Whenever they did their last bond issue, did they use all of our voting precincts? They did?
They did.
Oh, well, there weren't more arguments. Send a little bill.
Or, let me ask. The, one of the last emails that we had was suggesting that we were not gonna use this equipment for the election. Is that, what is it now?
We had issues with their board meeting, that they're having to give final approval on the verbiage for the ballot.
Yep.
And it wasn't gonna work with the deadlines that we thought we had to meet for the equipment to be in use. We have since figured out a way around that, so we are back using the machines.
When do our machines get here, do you know?
The truck pulled in when I headed this way, so...
They're here.
They're here.
Delivered today.
Yep. We need to make sure Ms. Tiney gets back over there so she can help with that check-in process. Uh, one other issue, we're okay with the school bond. We, we really just need some correction from you guys.
Well, did you get it?
Well, I don't know.
I think it's mixed.
Whether or not we gonna charge the school district some or all of the cost, so that I can officially report that on your behalf.
We're talking about, only talking about, uh, the cost around eighty thousand?
Yes, sir. That's a good estimate.
I mean, just, I'm just, I'm just, give or take, yeah.
That's a good estimate, yes, sir.
I mean, with all that we do, I don't see why we, this should just fall on us anyway. I mean, if we wanna do some, that's okay, but I just don't see us picking up the old tab. That's my feeling.
Well, um...
What's so funny, Larry? I thought it was a joke going on with this. I don't know, it's...
I don't know if it's offense below any at all, but the statute also allows for those costs to be a part of that bond issue. In other words, you have the, the bond proceeds itself can actually be used to defray the cost of...
They can?
Yes.
Correct.
I didn't know that. I, I thought they couldn't.
No, they can't.
Yeah, I, I was under pressure to couldn't.
They can roll the cost of the election into the bond.
That's correct. Covered in the bond.
Have they discussed that in their meetings, Lee?
I, I don't know that they've had a, a specific meeting with an official statement from the board supervisors here, because there hasn't been an official statement.
I don't, I, this doesn't have really an effect on it, but when we collect county taxes, the school already gets a bigger portion than the rest of the whole county. Um, we're already paying for this type stuff through our taxes that go, and then they also have the opportunity that they can roll this in their bond, um...
Not to count the, all the things that we graciously, and wanna do, but we do for the school district.
My excuses have all kinda went out the window, you know, since...
I would say, they can roll it back in their bond, let them roll it back in their bond. But I think we need to have some discussion with them on that before we really make a decision, wouldn't you think? I mean, as far as have, have a conversation, say, look, is this something you're willing to do?
Well, the other night when we had dinner with them, Bob and I was at table, and we brought up the fact that, you know, we were gonna do it, and she, well, one, we said, mentioned the fact we were gonna have the other election there, so, well, I was gonna have to come visit each one of y'all, cause we sure didn't want that.
Right.
And then Bob also made mention the fact that, well, we're gonna be sending you a bill for it, and she kinda say, ha, 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 you know, like, yeah, that ain't happening, so, uh, I, I, I think that, uh, I honestly, I thought they paid for it in the past. But if they've used all of our voting equipment, all of our locations for their pass, and we've always paid for it, well, this one's gonna pass. Wait a minute now, if they, whether we paid for it...
Wait, have you seen the paper, the breakdown of the monies?
No, I haven't.
Well, there's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and two schools are getting a hundred of that, a hundred and eighty million. I mean, a hundred and eighty million, and the two newest schools are getting a hundred of that a hundred and eighty million. There's gonna be a lot of people around the county that aren't as satisfied as they thought they would be.
Oh, really?
It's gonna be a tough one.
Yeah, and it's gotta win by sixty percent. So it, I'm not saying it won't win, but it's not gonna be a slam dunk.
So is it a ball field and all that, too?
No.
Yes, it is, at Northwest.
Yeah.
Northwest.
Well, what's got a ball field?
Northwest is getting the new school with the ball field.
Who's getting their skill with ball field?
I think they're getting a new football field, too.
Football field's just gotta redone. It's, it's already been done, I'm telling you. I don't, is there a football field in?
I, I thought I read that.
I don't think so.
I saw, I saw them in high school, I didn't see a football field.
Players getting, uh, filled out.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, it's not gonna be easy.
If, if, if by some chance it does not pass, then, and we don't pay for it, then who pays for it?
They do.
There's no bond issue to roll it over into.
Well, they have, they have money, just like we have money, they have money.
We take that risk, too.
She, she said that there was, uh, there was, that they could not pay, I guess it was, they couldn't pay for the advertisement of it. All they had to go through the foundation.
Yeah.
But the actual election itself can be paid for through the school.
Yes, the AG's opinions are very clear. The district is obligated to cover the cost of calling and conducting the school bond election. That's the district. So the, the law is very clear, the district cannot promote that bond issue, so they have a separate private foundation that does their promotion and funds that promotion. Is that clear? But the district is obligated to cover the cost. When I say obligated, it's still at the discretion of the board as to whether or not to bill them for that. That's why I'm needing y'all to help. What do I need to tell you?
If we, if we say that we want, we want them to pay for it, could they come back and say, all right, if we're gonna pay for it, then we want two voting locations, and we wanna use all paper?
Yes, at, on the eleventh, uh, when their board meets to officially adopt the verbiage for the ballot, they could, in that, in that board meeting, they could also go further, under the school bond election statute, and assign the polling precincts where the voting will take place. They could do that.
They can't say paper, though.
But they can't say paper?
The conduct, you, the one that you sent me says that we control the conduct. They just set the locations and the date.
That's correct.
And pay for it.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay.
How to conduct it, we control that. When I say we, election commissioners. Whether we use our equipment or not, that's us. Where the polling places are for that election, school district. So they've told us, we're gonna use all the polling places. We believe that that's the best practice. That's what they've told us, but they could change their position on the eleventh.
I think using them all is, is a better idea for them. That's where people are gonna go.
That's correct, and there could be some anger associated with it.
Not necessarily. They may not put any down in the South Cal part of the county, and put a ball at Northwest.
Maybe up there or down there.
Right, it'd be around in the Northwest.
How about this, can we just drag in a cord and say, we'll cover half the cost?
Yeah.
All right.
I don't want to, but yeah.
All right, okay.
How about this, can he negotiate it, and the votes will do his half?
I'm all right with a half, I think that shows us good faith.
Show support on that?
But, uh, I don't wanna just pick it all up.
Well, that's why we could use all of our equipment, we could test everything out, and won't be no finagle going wrong.
If y'all will allow this, because we don't know specifically what the cost will be, what I, what I'd like to suggest that we do is a half, not to exceed a certain amount, and I would say maybe forty thousand, that's half of a, of an eighty thousand dollar figure. I'd say not to exceed forty thousand. So if it costs us ninety, we're gonna eat five, but you understand where I'm going with that, right? Okay.
While we have you here, I'm gonna ask you a question. We pay our poll workers how much, do you know?
They get a hundred dollars a day for a basic poll worker.
All right, and then the manager gets?
A hundred and twenty-five.
And what's the max that we can pay somebody?
Plus they get pickup, for picking up the supplies and the ballot boxes.
Okay.
We got a limit, isn't there?
Depends on training.
Isn't it one fifty, a hundred and fifty? That's the top.
That's the, the most you can pay for the day. Now, they also get training pay?
But that's, is it a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and fifty?
A hundred and twenty-five is the max you can pay a poll worker for the day.
Oh, we're maxed out, then?
No, we're paying poll workers a hundred, we're paying managers a hundred and twenty-five.
No difference in the manager and poll worker, is it?
How do we do about getting that increase?
But I'm, I know, I'm saying, if you went to pay the poll workers a hundred and twenty-five...
Well, then you'd have some issues, and nobody would wanna be the manager. At twenty-five is what we use to grab them. Library works.
If we did legislation to, to get that increased, it's not gonna be on the state's back, it's all on us, right? So there's no reason for them to vote against it. So what do y'all think, we, we get that increased?
One fifty, and let poll worker, poll manager get one fifty, and then the, up the others twenty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be like that.
Cause I, I mean, I've got people in several precincts that work at school, or whatever, and they take off a day, and they actually lose money.
Right.
You know, they do get a cash, I mean, like, this is...
Well, times have changed, you know, I mean...
But it's getting harder to find poll workers.
You don't charge for yours, do you? You just do it for free?
Yeah, absolutely.
Huh?
No. Sometimes it's for...
It's paid, it's paid, it'll be a poll...
I guarantee you.
It's only a hundred bucks. It's a long day.
There ain't no question about it. I thought, I didn't know you got paid, I thought you were...
I thought you just...
It ain't a hobby, you know?
Well, this way, if we paid them more, we can, might kick a few out, you know, so...
It's gonna be neat for fewer with these new doc, new, new equipment you got.
Okay.
So maybe we can talk to our...
Yeah, I, I like that, and, and I've heard, had it asked several times. And how long have they been paid that same thing? That's what I'm saying.
Since we've been here doing work, so late.
Yeah, and I mean, yeah.
I can't answer that, I don't know.
Well, I don't either, I don't know either. Yeah. So, yeah, it's, they probably due.
I don't want...
They're like, we due from, we...
That's the way before me.
It's not?
I thought we used that across the...
Okay. Are we ready to go?
Is that all you wanted from me?
What, what about the cities?
Y'all have to make sure we want to allow cities to use our election and, and our equipment and what costs. Now, the cities want to use our commissioners, they have to contract separately with the town, and pay, we can't pay the commissioners for working the city election.
Yeah.
So they have to contract with them. So, I am getting a request from City of Pearl.
I need to get our lobbyists working on that.
She's gonna send a letter, and so you've already been contacted by...
Jared was contacted by Linda Weekly, that's Florence.
Okay, Florence, so we already have two that we know that would like to use our equipment.
It's gonna be expensive.
What's the two dates? The municipal elections, is it gonna be soon?
May, may sometime.
It's municipal, and then, uh, school bonds, March, March of September.
But now, all this contingent, there has to be an election commissioner willing to do it, right?
Well, if they're, if they're willing, the city's willing to pay.
Yeah.
I'm sure they would.
And they get to set their own price, right?
It's a contract, it's gotta be on a contract.
That's what I mean, but it's gotta be their price you come up with.
We're not running their elections.
I don't think they're ask, I don't really think they're asking to.
Yeah, they have not approached us, but if they do, we are not, we do not want to run their election.
Well, I know, last time, that, uh, what's the dude, uh, the guy, Eric, he did Pearl, and I know he did a lot. Yeah, cause they basically didn't have an election commission.
Yeah, because he didn't at that time understand that he would have to contract, and he was thinking we would pay for it.
Yeah, he, he did a lot of work for free.
But he said even with the contract, he said...
But only thing, who's gonna... When, when will you train them, though? When can, when the opportunity for them to be trained?
We can put them into our training classes for our poll workers.
That's what, that's what I was saying.
If y'all choose to let them use those machines. We will let them come to our training classes that we're already doing.
Cause these babies are brand, spanking new. Yeah.
We, we had twenty broken machines from the last municipal elections.
We need to have somebody to move them.
And, and a penalty if they're broke. Shouldn't we have, shouldn't they be tacked, can we do that? We tacked back into a penalty?
Yeah, we, you know...
If a machine comes back damaged?
There, there's a couple of different issues there. Uh, number one, it, it's, it's still going to be within that first roughly six-month period of having brand-new machines.
How about this, man, since it's our brand, our first year, let's just not do it in our first year.
Give them old machines then?
Don't, let them do anything, let them, you buy paper.
Brandon is using paper ballots.
It's our first year, we ain't used them yet.
Lovely is old machines.
You, you've got an opportunity here with them being brand-new machines, to, to point out to them, we will have one opportunity to do a single-issue election, that's the school bond. That's it. The next opportunity that the county has to address the issue of ballots and preparation of ballots and those types of things for county purposes will not be until November. And that will actually just be one special election for...
Jerry's got a solution, Jerry's got a solution. We can give them our own ones.
Yeah, but then you're gonna have the IT people working for a week.
No, 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 they, no.
Give them, give them.
Give them. And, and they call ESNS and have them program them and do everything.
Why would we discount fifty percent of the election cost to roll our machines out, to try them out, but yet you don't wanna use them for the cities?
Because, I think I don't want to, that the cities would be in control of everything. We're in control of all of ours, right?
Okay, if we...
Our, our people's with them on the bond issue.
Okay, yeah, I, I...
So, so that you're clear, there is a combination responsibility.
If they contract with our people to run their election, then I would, then I would be okay.
Yeah, but they're not gonna do it.
But if they're not contracting, then I wouldn't let the machines go.
That's correct.
And last time, they had to chase down all the different components to the machines and look for them. We had Eric and Leslie physically had to go down there and find them themselves. They did not return anything.
If y'all are not gonna be in control of them, then I wouldn't do it.
But they just said they're not gonna do it.
Well, I mean, you know, with our elections, we got our road crew and everybody to go set them all up and everything. We, we won't have that for the others, you know?
You guys need to understand, you walk out of here, you're gonna hear about it from some of your municipalities.
I'm good with it.
Full force, why won't y'all let us use your machines?
I'm good with it.
You're gonna hear about it, so just be prepared.
I'm gonna call and tell them. But then what are you gonna tell them?
Oh, they're gonna call, Jay would let us do it.
Bob, Bob.
Bob and Jay.
I mean, to me, the contract, if goes hand in hand, if, I mean, we, we can't turn our equipment...
Well, what are they gonna use then?
Our people have to use our equipment.
What are they gonna have to use?
They can use paper ballots and do a hand count.
Two, three.
Brandon's gonna do that, uh, which will be one of the larger municipalities that has to deal with that hand count.
I'm dead serious, they can use our old machines.
We just give it to them, let them have to handle it all themselves?
No, let them call ESNS, it has to do more.
That's what I said, they'll have to handle it all themselves.
Yeah. Yes, and they should charge them a little small fee.
So here's one issue now, we, we did not address, and Hart was not interested in receiving our old equipment, okay? So that's, that's been unaddressed, what are we gonna do with our old equipment?
They can have it.
Yeah, so my thought is, we, we need to make sure, if we say to the municipality, if y'all can use our old equipment, we can't do anything with our old equipment, if somebody comes up and says, hey, we want your stuff, we gotta hold it now, because we've got a promise out to the municipality. So just understand, you're gonna commit to hold that old equipment.
So if I called and say, the greatest use paper ballots, or if you want one of our, or two of our old machines, but they're, they're your baby, you'll have to contact ESNS to come say that, it's your baby.
What I meant was, we give it to them permanently.
That's what I meant. That's what I meant, we'll give it to you.
It's crystal clear, I hear you. We do not want it back. We do not want it back.
Don't they value us?
Yeah, we can throw them in through our minutes.
I'm gonna tell them if they want, want that.
That's it. We can get a little money from Park.
We may tell them that they have to take twenty of our machines if they're gonna use them, or they're...
They'll need twenty to keep two working.
Yeah, they will.
They just parcel them out to all the municipalities.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell, offer that to them, we'll just give it to them. It'll be theirs, and, and, uh, we'll give them ESNS's contact.
Yeah, we do need to formalize, guys, we do need to formalize for the inventory purposes.
Through our minutes.
If we're gonna do that, we need to run it through the minutes to do it, but, so y'all, if y'all are serious about that, we need to...
If they look at that, if they're interested, that's why I guess we can do that.
We can come back on the next one.
I mean, they'll have to take, they're bored of it, too.
They ain't gonna do it, but, you know.
Well, you don't know.
Prepare to count them one by one.
If you, if you don't have an election commission, I'm pretty sure that you probably don't want...
Still, it won't hurt to offer. That way you say, at least you, you offered.
Yeah.
I think they'll probably do paper.
Are we okay, are we clear on that?
But after they don't do it, let's put them on eGov and sell them for what we get.
Okay. Y'all, y'all are okay with me communicating to whomever on your behalf that, that the board is not going to allow the new election equipment to be used in the municipal election process? Y'all are okay with that?
Without, without the commissioners.
Okay.
If they decide to, and they work something, that, then that would be, that'd open another door.
But she just said none of them are gonna do it.
Well, we know what they have to do.
But they can, they can contact you theirself.
Well, let us get down the road a little bit, you know, maybe, you know, three or four years.
This is the first time for us to, because it's a reasonable explanation. It's, it's new to us, we don't even, you know, have a comfort level with it yet, much less being able to pass it on.
My excuse.
Yeah, here's our brand-new Ferrari, take it out for a test drive.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, with no insurance.
Yeah, with no insurance, yeah.
Okay. Now, I have a motion to go back into executive session.
Discuss.
Discuss litigation personnel.
Oh, man.
Motion, much gain, second, Mr. Cross. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, ask you leave one more time, sorry about that.
I'm bringing the clock.
Everyone? Oh, I'm looking at it, man. I had it down, at nine thirty-seven, I, it will be nine thirty-seven.
Lost concentration.
Do I, do I, or do I not?
I'll break you.
Don't leave, cause I'm gonna need you for something.
I put that little one back.
When I get out of here, I'm gonna need you.
We got, we got a lunch at seven thirty.
You ain't going anywhere, then. I'll see you.
All right. Okay. It's gotta be big enough to see it. They're not expensive down at Walmart. Okay, alright, let's go and get this in and out of here.
What's it gonna say?
It's gonna take up the whole side of the wall. Well, still changing wallet, gonna get us there.
Okay. Alright, I have a motion to go into executive session.
You already had it.
I got it, I'm waiting on...
Clear the room.
Clear the room. That's hard to do.
We're gonna fire Craig here in a minute.
Thank you, Janice.
Chuck, our Chuck, no, we don't want to take him off anybody's stuff. Dun 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 dun.
No, you're doing the clock.
Somebody swiped your wallet, I'm gonna give us a good one.
Now, you say that, man, I was, I was in New Orleans playing, and I was thinking, well, you gotta have your license to, to, you know, to enroll. Well, that knocked off my nail. I was stuck, I couldn't, I, I didn't have no money, I had a car, I didn't have a driver's license.
You lost your wallet?
I was done, and so I had a whole damn security.
Alright, we're ready, we're in the executive session. Yeah, we're waiting on you.
Three hours later, he comes walking up to me.
We gotta make a motion to go into...
We made a motion to go into the executive session.